Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District September 8th Board Meeting. I am A E S D Board President Mark Lopez and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al 219-3909-756. Cuando se le pida, presione el pin 564154502 y el símbolo pound. Let's begin with the flag salute. Please stand.
The United States of America and to your mother, for your children, for the nation, for your God, for your beloved, for the nation of this world.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. Item 3B, our introductions and roll call. First, we have Dr. Paolo Magalas.
Here.
Board member Ryan A. Relis.
Hello.
Board member Juan G. Alvarez.
Good evening.
Board clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Hello, everyone.
Again, I will be your board president, Mark A. Lopez, this evening. And superintendent Dr. Christopher Downing.
Good evening, everyone.
Assistant Superintendent Educational Services, Dr. Mary Grace.
Hello, everybody.
Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Deena Meland.
Good evening.
Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services, Jesse Chavarria.
Good evening, everyone.
Senior Director of School Safety and Operations, Tracy Golden.
Good evening, everyone.
Our senior administrative assistant, Iris Camacho. Our interpreters are Mary Madrigal and Alina Avilar Roque, located in the back of the room. Technology support technician, Janice Cato. Media services supervisor, Brian Brooks. And media production specialist, Darrell Hutchison. Hutchison, sorry. Item 3C, report of closed session items taken during closed session. The board voted 5-0 to place employee number 09082021-01 on an unpaid leave of absence pursuant to Education Code Sections 44010, 44940, Section A, and 44940.5. Item 3D, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye.
Passes 5-0. Item 4, special order of business. 4A is our Measure G and J Bond Program update and bond sale process review presented by Tim Carty of Piper Sandler &amp; Company. Isela Vázquez, our senior director of facilities, planning and construction. And Jesse Chavarria, Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services. Welcome.
This evening, Isela Vázquez, our senior director of facilities, planning and construction, will give the board an update on the projects that have been completed under Measure G as well as Measure J. And she will also provide information on the next projects that are in the planning stages that are part of Facilities Master Plan. In addition, Tim Carty from Piper Sandler &amp; Company will give the board information as to the possible amounts that we could go out in 2022 in order to finance the next projects that are part of the Facilities Master Plan. This is just information today. If we move forward, then of course, Tim Carty will kind of go through that process at the end of his presentation. So I'll turn it over to Isela.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chavarria. Good evening, Board President Lopez, members of the board, superintendent Dr. Downing, members of cabinet, and guests. To begin, this slide captures the many accomplishments achieved as a result of the Measure G and J Bond Program in just the past four years. I would like to take this opportunity to highlight a few of the projects such as St. Kissin Roosevelt. The reconstruction of these schools have provided us with new standards of educational facilities for the 21st century and beyond. Additionally, we have completed the implementation of the single point of entry at all our schools to enhance security and safety for our staff and students. These projects along, excuse me, this is the first time presenting with the mask. These projects, along with the others on this list, have created the framework in which the next phase of projects will be implemented. This next slide simply recaps the priority projects established in 2016. This was used as the basis of evaluating the implementation of the next phase of projects. Subsequently, at a previous board meeting, our architect, LPA, presented for implementation this next set of projects, and they're broken out into two phases, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Included is the reconstruction of Henry Elementary School, the addition of two NPRs at Juárez Elementary and Paul Rivier Elementary, and the addition of a student services facility So with the board's approval to move these projects forward, the planning process has been initiated and is currently underway. For reconstruction of an entire school, I just would like to share that it takes approximately three to four years from beginning to occupancy of that new facility. For an NPR, the addition of NPR building, it should be much shorter. With the planning process requirement, Government Code Section 4525 requires district to go through a competitive process for the hiring of consultants such as architects. So this slide on the top table outlines the request for qualification process that has been initiated for the invitation of architectural firms to submit their statement of qualifications. Today, we have completed the two-day interview process on August 31st and September 1st. As a result, we have compiled a list of pre-qualified architects, and the next step is to submit that list to the board for approval at the September 22nd board meeting. Following that approval, at the next board meeting in October, we will begin to assign projects to the four bond projects that we currently saw in the previous list, in the previous slide, I should say. This slide is a financial analysis that details the amount of funding that is necessary to complete the next wave of bond projects. As per the industry standard, our architect has included an escalation cost of approximately 4.5% to account for the construction costs for materials and labor as these projects go into construction. So with that said, and with this in mind, I will now hand it over to Tim Carty to walk you through the funding process. Thank you.
Thank you, Isela. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. It's nice to see all of you, as well as guests and members of district cabinet and others. When we hear about these exciting projects, that leads to the question, do we have a funding source with which to pay for them? One of the nice things that we have here in Anaheim Elementary School District is the fact that our voters have been very generous with us. And we've successfully passed two general obligation bond measures, Measure G in 2010, Measure J in 2016, and both of them have funding still available. So what I wanted to do this evening is just give a little summary and recap, status report, if you will, of each of the measures. The last slide that Isela shared with you, I think had a bottom line figure of $105 million or something. So the bottom line of all this is going to be, we can raise that. We can raise that. So let me just walk through a couple of slides. Do I just point the clicker? So first of all, Measure G. Whenever I think about our bond measures and just do a little refresher, I always like to go back and look at the original ballot language. So this was the Measure G ballot language, the 75-word question which the voters approved in 2010. And the reason I've underlined some of those phrases is, as you can see, it was a very broadly worded ballot measure. You see everything from roofs, plumbing, sewer, improving technology, relieving overcrowding. So it's very flexible, and it was designed to be flexible so as the needs of the district changed over time, the bond funding source would be equally flexible. Here is the snapshot of Measure G to date. Approved by the voters, almost 64% of the vote, $169.3 million. We've taken a number of draws over the years, and as you see in Bullet 5, we have about $44.8 million left. Now Bullet 6 and 7 are important. Let's look at Bullet 7 first. At the time we went to the voters in 2010, we estimated a tax rate of about $19.98 per $100,000. Remember, that's not market value. That's tax value, or what they call assessed value. The hot-off-the-press tax for this year being levied by Orange County is less than that. It's only $14.96. So that means we have some maneuvering room to try to raise some funds to pay for the projects which Isela was just describing. So that's always a good place to be when the actual tax rate is lower than what we estimated to voters at the time of the election. So that's Measure G. Measure J, the more recent measure from 2016, this ballot language is, one could argue, even more broad than that of G. Repair and modernize classrooms, et cetera, et cetera. But if you look at about the last 10 words, you see the verbs acquire, renovate, and construct. And then you see the nouns, classrooms, facilities, sites, equipment. That's about as broad as you can be. So that really allows you to do not only what the current needs of the district are, but as they may change over time into the future. So that was well drafted by the legal council. Now the snapshot of Measure J. Look at the passage rate in Bullet 2. I mean, that is an overwhelming sign of support by the voters to everything that the board and the district team has done and is doing for the community. Much bigger bond, $318 million. We've taken one draw to date, $93 million. So we have $225 million left to go. Now Bullets 6 and 7. Bullet 7, what we estimated to voters, $24 per 100,000. Look at Bullet 6, where we are again, we're underneath that. Remember, for an elementary school district, the most you can ask voters to support is $30 per 100,000 per year. So both times, we've targeted less than that, and now the actual tax rates for both are lower than that. So that's again, what's giving us, as I'm saying, maneuvering room to fund our projects. So probably the most important slide here in the deck is this slide. And I'm going to share a couple of things with you. This is Measure G. I should say the next two slides. There's one for G, there's one for J. So what does all this mean? If you look at Measure G, back when we put it on the ballot, we used 4% as a planning tool, year-over-year rate of change in property values in the district. Now, we didn't quite, if you look at 2021, 22, we didn't quite grow that much this past year. But the good news is, because of COVID, we actually budgeted 2% as a planning tool. So at 3.12%, we outperformed that, and we've used 2% next year, just to be safe, who knows with COVID. But one of the reasons I want to point that 3.12%, I know in Orange County, there had been some fears that property values might actually, on the tax rolls, go down because of Disney, because of the hotels, because of the, you know, the lack of tourism in Orange County. Didn't happen. So we still grew 3.12%, we'd only used 2%. If you look almost toward the bottom, about halfway down, where you see the draws that we've completed, 2011, 2016, 2019, we can tap into Measure G for about $30 million in 2022. Now, you might ask, well, why can't we get more? That's because we want to try to stay within that bottom blue stripe, that $19.98 tax target. So to stay there and try to, within a very narrow bandwidth, maintain that, we can tap into about $30 million, which would leave us about $14, $15 million for the future. So that's G. So remember, Isela had a number of about $105 million. So how do we get there? We can get about $30 million on G. Well, what about Measure J? So Measure J, everything in the top half of the page is the same. The assessed valuation information is identical to what we just looked at for G. Now, if you look where it says issue summary, the bottom half of the page, there you see the completed draw in 2018, or $93 million. But we can tap into Measure J, up to $88 million in 2022. So 30 plus 88 is 118 million. Now, we won't borrow any more than we need. So if Isela tells us we need 103, 107, whatever the number is, we won't borrow more than we need. But at 118, that's greater than it sounds like, Isela, you think you may need. So we can fund these projects. Now, remember the bottom blue stripe there. You might ask again, why can't we get more? We want to stay within that $24 tax rate. So that's one of the interesting dynamics when you look at G and J, is G has the $19.98, J has the $24. So J always gives us a little bigger bang for the buck because we have more borrowing capacity, if you will. So I think the takeaway is, anytime in 2022 when we're ready, we should be able to raise the money you need for the next group of projects. So the last slide that I had, and then I know Jesse wants to make a couple of concluding remarks. What are the next big picture steps in the process? So the first blue arrow, we're here having the discussion tonight. At some point, maybe in October, maybe in November, I think we would come to you with an action item that would authorize staff to work with us and the other members of the bond team to put together a two-pronged bond draw, one on G, one on J, for closure sometime in 2022. So you'd get another opportunity to think about this and approve an action item sometime later this calendar year. Then I think in 2022, the middle blue arrow, whenever Isela feels like you need the money, you know, you're running low on cash, it's time to activate it, we would come before you one more time for approval of the legal paperwork that effectuate the bond draw. Now, an important step in the process, if you remember, and I've mentioned this to you many times, the district has an outstanding credit rating. And I know a couple of the board members have joined us in the past. I'll say that in the COVID era, those San Francisco trips have been replaced by virtual meetings, but we have a good credit rating. We want to get it maintained. Your staff has always done an outstanding job representing the district together with board members that have participated. So we want to make sure we keep, we're in the double A credit rating category. We want to try to keep that. So we'll weave that into the process. We'll interface with the various officials at the county of Orange. And at some point, right Jesse, when we think we need the money in 2022, we'll go into the marketplace, as we've done in the past, and conduct the sales of the bonds. You do both in one day, one on G, one on J. You know, we might have won at 9:00 in the morning, one at 10:00 in the morning, something like that. So that's essentially the remaining, from my point of view, important milestones in the process. Jesse, did you want to add anything or concluding remarks? And then be happy to answer any questions, obviously, that the board members may have.
No, at this point, I mean, we want to open it up for questions by like Tim shared, you know, based on the projected projects that are in the queue, as they say, right? We are looking in terms of the funds that are still available, allow us to do a lot of the planning pieces like Isela shared at the beginning, right? But there would be the need for additional funds in order to move forward on those projects. And given the guidelines of spending 85% of those funds within three years, we believe that, you know, going after some funding in the middle of 2022 would make sense, in particular, if, you know, because of the multipurpose, the multipurpose buildings would be able to get started, the planning phase in the fall, and start in early 2023, which is when we would need some of those funds right away. I know, Henry, it is a priority as well, but as Isela shared, it's, you know, a three, four-year process. We already started that process, so we're looking to break ground probably by the end of 2023 on that.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments, compliments?
I don't have any questions. I just want to just give a shout out to Tim and your team. You guys have always, are always fantastic. I've had the pleasure of going up to San Francisco on one of those trips and participating in the bond sales, or whatever you call it. I know Trustee Philbeck has as well, and you've always just been awesome. Numbers intimidate me, but you made it very clear, and you were always there just to explain things to me as clearly as possible, which is great because of the fact that we do get asked from our constituents quite a bit about, what is this going for? What is this, you know, like, how is this built? You know, and I feel a little confident in the sense of when I am able to give them some numbers based on what you've taught us. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, Trustee.
Mine will be very brief. Thank you. Great work. Very proud of the work that you all have done so far and the projections, and so great work. Thank you, and great presentation.
Thank you.
I'm just happy to hear that we'll be able to fund our projects the way we were expecting them. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim. It was, I had a great experience when I went to San Francisco, and boy, did I learn a lot. And it's served me well since that was a few years ago, you know, every time we have these presentations, it just did a lot to help me understand all of it. And it's just great that we're going to be able to go forward soon. So thank you.
All right. Well, I'll round out the thanks and the compliments as well. Mr. Carty and Mr. Chavarria, thank you for, and your respective teams for all your hard work and the presentation, and working together as one team. We appreciate that, and thank you so much for the update.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you for letting me be here. All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
And thank you for all the presentation, Jesse and Isela. That was great. Thank you.
All right. Item 4B, school reopening update. Dr. Christopher Downing, our superintendent, and Tracy Golden, our senior director of school safety and operations. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and Anaheim community. This evening, we'd like to provide for you an update on our reopening. And if we can advance to the next slide. As we start tonight's presentation, we want to recognize the COVID testing that has been taking place at Key Elementary School. Through our research, we found that neighboring districts haven't offered this type of robust testing for students and staff, and it's an area of pride for us. One of the things that we would like to point out on this slide is the uptick in the number of appointments that have taken place over the past few weeks. So as you can see, on the week of August 9th, we had 229 tests that took place. The week of August 16th, that number grew to 404. The following week, up to 481. The following week, 506. And based on the numbers so far this week, we anticipate continued growth. With this service, we have been able to support students who are on the modified quarantine. We've also been able to provide, again, rapid testing for staff members. The positives in regards to the test that we're using is, it's a nasal swab, and you receive results in only 15 minutes. One of the things that we'd like to say to the community and to our families is, thank you for your patience. We know that when you visit the site, although staff is working very hard, occasionally, you are waiting a bit. Everyone has been very kind to our staff, to the testers that we have. And again, we are pleased to be able to offer this kind of support. But as we move forward, we are going to transition our testing actually to each school site on a rotating schedule. And I'm going to ask Tracy to share that transition plan with you. And as I did at our last meeting, I just want to recognize Tracy for spearheading our efforts, especially with the testing. This is an area that not many districts endeavor to participate in, but it's one that we feel strongly is a service and a benefit to our stakeholders. So Tracy, please talk to us about our transition.
All right. Good evening. So as Dr. Downing said, you know, the Key site has been very successful, and I spent all day there today, and they did a fantastic job. There was hardly any waiting. But what we have found is that with, for our students that are on that modified in-school quarantine, they have to be tested twice within that 10-day period. And so, you know, that requires someone to, you know, put them in the car, drive over to Key. So we want to transition over to testing at school sites to support those families so that students can be tested real quick at school, go back to class, and not have to have the driving piece going back and forth to Key. This will also eventually support our weekly testing of staff members that will start happening in October. So this is a very, very draft schedule. It's meant to be flexible, but the idea is that every school site would have a Monday and Thursday, or they would have a Tuesday, Friday. So two days a week, they'd have testers on site that can do staff and students. Wednesday is kind of a floating day, so they can come to district office sites or other district buildings or school sites as needed. So this is one team, but there's going to be actually four teams to cover all 24 of our schools. So we are using EMTs to do the testing, and then we have a clerical person that does the technology part of, you know, registering everybody and signing them in. And then the tests themselves are actually provided for free from the state's K-12 school rapid testing program. So the state of California provides those to us. Also, we have been hosting vaccination clinics. So we've had a couple already, one at Gwynn and one at Family Oasis. And you can see at Gwynn, we did 55 patients were vaccinated, and at Family Oasis in August, 58 patients were vaccinated. And tomorrow, we will have another clinic over at Family Oasis between 2:00 and 6:00. And that's open to anybody in the community, 12 and older. Next slide. Also, good news, we've been able to onboard a couple of contact tracers. They started this week, and contact tracing really involves a lot of information gathering, finding out who the close contacts were, figuring out what the infectious period is, when do students return to school, talking to families about their quarantine period. And up until this point, it's been done by the staff over at the schools. So this is a way to kind of support school staff so that they aren't spending as much time doing the contact tracing, and these people are able to do that for them. The other piece that they're able to do is that we are required to report to the healthcare agency. SPOT is their online platform that we use to report positive cases. So they're able to do that also. And I think, Dr. Downing.
Yes. And then, board members, our last slide is just something we wanted to revisit. You know, we made a commitment to you and to the community that we would lower our class sizes. So we wanted to give everyone an update on where we are with that. So as you can see with our TK, our average class size is 20.91. For Kinder, 21.46. First grade, 23.99. Second, 21.26. Third grade, 23.17. Fourth grade, 25.15. Fifth grade, 25.38. And sixth grade, 24.49. And these numbers are below, well below, what our normal class sizes would be. And as we've stated at previous board meetings, we've leveraged our federal funds to provide these lower class sizes. Again, our goal in returning to in-person, full-day instruction was to support smaller classes also to do yeoman's efforts in terms of mental health. And we're pleased that tonight, there's going to be a presentation on some of the resources that are also available in our schools, so we wanted to connect that presentation to this update as well. So at this time, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. One of the- questions that you might have. One of the things that I would also mention is in our family letters, we are continuing to be very transparent and to share with our stakeholders what the data for Anaheim is. Although the state has moved away from the colored tiered system, we're still providing that information because we want everyone to be informed on what's going on in our community. So, with that, board members, we welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Downing and Tracy Golden. Any questions?
Just comments. Thank you so much for the update. Great work, like usual. Very proud. I wish I had a class size that small, but great work.
I'll just say thank you for all that you're doing. This thing has so many moving parts and has for so long, and you guys work tirelessly and Cabinet, our administration, our employees. Everybody is keeping us going on this, and just thank you for all. It's just a tremendous amount of work, and I just want to recognize you for that and say thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, it's really obvious that you're sending all these messages out to our community and our families. I get the emails as a parent with all the letters that parents receive, and I'm just really proud of all the work that our district's doing to be kind of on the forefront of all this activity. I know that neighboring districts aren't even near as organized or as prepared to support our families in the way that we have and the capacity we have. So, just kudos to everybody and all the hard work that you do to make sure everything works out well for our families, and you're supporting us as best as you can. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Just one last thing, if I could. I want to thank our team, and then I also want to thank every staff member in amazing AESD for their ongoing efforts for us to remain open and to welcome our students back. The last bit that I would like to say is we're working on an informational video that we are going to present to the community in the next couple of weeks that just is going to take you into the classroom so you can see the safety protocols, and we think that our families will appreciate that. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you again, Dr. Downing and Tracy Golden. We will await that video in suspense. So, thank you. For our next item, 4C, I just want to preface this by apologizing in advance for any surname pronunciation errors. They are only my own if I were to mispronounce your name. So, I apologize in advance. Mental health awareness. Zain Meintz, LMFT Associate Clinical Director, Community Programs with Western Youth Services. Jennifer Icke, LCSW Program Director with Western Youth Services. Giovanna Sanguenetti, Director of Phoenix House, California. Monica Rivera, wraparound clinician with Phoenix House, California. Shirley Diaz, Program Specialist, Ermes. Stephanie Bernal, Program Psychologist, and Juan Diego Torres, our school counselor, will be presenting our next item. Welcome.
Good evening, STEAM Board members, Cabinet members, colleagues, family, and community partners. It's a pleasure for us to be here with you to share some of the amazing work that we have done throughout the years. The presentation is going to focus in really, how do we provide that social, emotional, and behavioral support for our students? We are going to give you just a quick view of what it is that we do, and I would like to introduce some of our team members as well as some of our community partners. We wouldn't be able to provide what we do if we're not able to be flexible. And as you introduced some of our members, many things have come up between last night and this morning, and so consequently, some of the members that were going to be here are not here. But I am happy to report to you that we do have some team members that are willing to step in and support when we need the support the most. So, we do have with us Jennifer Icke from Western Youth Services. We also have Zain from Western Youth Services. We have Diego. He is one of our counselors at Olive Street. And we have James, one of our school psychologists at Price, and also supporting the Online Academy with the Independent Study Program. So, they will be co-presenting with me this afternoon. And I know that Jason could not be able to be with us, but he has contributed to everything that we do in supporting the needs of our student. Next. Do I have control? I do. Okay. So, we went over the introductions. We wanted to provide you with just an overview of how do we go as a district? How have we approached the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students? And I'll have Diego come with us and give you a quick overview of what the multi-tier of support system looks like and what level of supports are we providing for our students at every tier.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to be back here. Last time I was here, I was advocating for our school soccer team. So, it was, it's really good to be back here, and it was some good times. So, here, we're advocating now for like all these different things, you know, so just the type of supports that we have. So, obviously, everything that we do is driven by data, whether it's attendance, discipline records, definitely BESI, which is given three times a year. So, after this data is given, we analyze this and develop a continuum of MTSS to address the needs of staff, students, and families. Okay? And so, as you can see on the first part, like our tier one, you can see that all of our students receive either PBIS, sorry, Capturing Kids' Hearts, which really helps build that relationship between the teacher and the students to have a better classroom support. And second step as well, as well as whole class guidance lessons. And whole class guidance lessons are really, really good for, the teachers love them too. The students love them. They're very interactive. But as well, like, we will have, as counselors, we will have like a certain topic that we want to cover. But here's where we address the needs because a lot of teachers will be like, hey, Mr. Diego, can you do a lesson on this? Can you do a lesson on that? So, we go to what each class needs, grade level, and then also restorative practices, which I believe is, I think, just a major thing of like, it's a major empowerment for the students because we create the circles and we help them understand that they can talk about certain things. They can, they can open up, especially, we've done them inside with like, with the teachers, and they're able to say like, hey, we wish we could do this. We wish we can do that. And they also understand that the teacher's listening to them through these restorative practices. So, we get a lot of, a lot of positive feedback. And not only that, not only when there's an issue, but we have a lot of students too that come from other countries. And so, a lot of times when they're Spanish-speaking, I'm able to provide that restorative practice through, in Spanish, and it helps them open up because I was in their place once, so I understand what that means. So, that's a little bit of what we cover because we also do lunch clubs and things that help cover all students. But also, and on our tier two, which is more like supplemental support after we analyze some of the data, some of the students might receive either Love and Logic, again, restorative practices, group counseling, which, where we assist and also with our representatives from WYS. And some students also might receive check-ins and check-outs, just to kind of remind them of what they need to do throughout the day and then helps them out too for the day. And then, in our more intensified support, we have restorative practices. Again, some students might actually receive individual counseling. And then OMC, which is Other Means of Correction, which again, kind of like, it's another way of restorative, which lets students or we're trying to promote the fact that it's, as opposed to being punitive with any type of discipline, we want to make sure that we are making sure that any student that does have some, any type of discipline issue, they are able to, we're able to resolve it in a way that's restorative so that they are able to go back into the classroom, so they're able to have that good relationship with the teacher and the students. And then also the community mental health referral. So, and then I'll go to the next slide.
May we advance, please? I have it here. I'm sorry. I apologize. So, this is going to provide you with a quick overview of what have we done as a district. We really are starting in 2008, 2007 and 2008. And that's when we had some counselors providing support through a grant. Then let's fast forward a little bit, and some of the school sites begin to take that funding, and then they figure, you know, this is really what our students need. So, let's expand beyond the academics. And we really feel that the social, emotional, and development, socially development of our students is also important. And some of the schools then begin to have more of the funding through Western Youth Services for some clinicians to be able to provide that. In 2012, then we have ERMS, Educational Related Mental Health Services, coming to our school district, and now we hire four counselors. We started with one, and then that counselor started to provide some supports for our students with an IEP. That quickly grew into, we need to expand because this is beyond just some, the few students. We really need to make this available for more. Within 2012 to 2015, we went from having four counselors to having 24 counselors at that, at that point. And we recognized that we really needed for all students to have access to all levels of support, especially when it came to that social, emotional learning and their behavioral development. So, that's when, I need to say thank you to you because many of you guys were part of the board that approved LCAP for this counselors to be able, for us to be able to have a counselor at every site. So, 2015, 2016, that's when we had that creation and the implementation of the behavioral support teams. That's what we called it within our school district. That's when we began to really systematically take a look at if there is a behavior, if there is a social, emotional need, how can we come as a team? How can we come as a group and address it and be able to then support the student and support the staff? What is it that we need to do? So, I wanted to say thank you through that foresight. We're talking about 2015, when these teams were created. Many of those teams are called wellness teams. That's that, the term that it is used in other districts. And you see that formation within the last two to three years. We had it for already 2015, 2016, when we had that creation of those teams. So, not only did you see the foresight of let's bring in new counselors, but we also begin to create partnerships strongly with Western Youth Services that we already had, but we brought them on board. Let's make, let's have somebody else be part of our team. We also brought Phoenix House that came as our response to a community need. And also, we are now partnering with the Department of Education, who is also providing a lot of training for our staff members. And we address this through the multi-tier of support system. So, now James is going to go over and is going to review for us, what is that behavioral support team? You might hear a lot of that BSD team, but I wanted to just to provide a quick overview, who are we and what do we bring to the table?
And the purpose, the purpose of a multidisciplinary team approach is along the lines of what Ray Kroc said, in that none of us is as good as all of us. So, we, everyone on this team contributes to their level of expertise to ensure that the needs are met across disciplines and in every aspect of the student's education. We start with the BHA. The Behavioral Health Aid is an integral part of the social and emotional supports on a campus, and it's also, they're also a doorway to services beyond the campus with Western Youth Services and beyond. The BIA, Behavior Intervention Aid, is, includes a site BIA, program BIA, or one-to-one BIAs, and they're generally the front lines of behavior management on a campus. The admin includes principals, vice principals, and leadership assistants who contribute knowledge of the resources and policies of a school site. School counselors, of course, play an essential role in a student's psychosocial development when the additional support is needed. School nurses are actually a rare addition to this type of team and incorporate a medical perspective as well as overall general health understanding. And school psychologists, of course, include the site psychologist, which may be a single site or a multiple-site school psychologist, district ABA support psychologist, or the learning and behavior psychologist, and they contribute their knowledge of behavioral and cognitive development as well as their expertise in special education. During the behavior support teams, we engage in a problem analysis process, and we triage the students and determine who's best qualified of these team members to be able to meet the needs of that student. And much of the time, multiple team members are engaged and doing different aspects of support. There's a process in place for referrals from teachers, parents, behavior support team members, if they're not already identified as part of the regular school-wide screening process, which occurs in the fall, the winter, and in the spring. And on a weekly basis, we problem solve and develop strategies and solutions in our approach to meeting these students' needs.
Thank you. So, 2018, we were faced with a very unique need at one of our school sites, where we needed to put resources for the students while they were with us in the classroom, but also we needed to put some supports at home. This provided an opportunity for us to expand our partnerships with the community. It provided an opportunity for us to be hands-on with many different needs from our students to the parents. Jamboree Housing provided that opportunity for us, which now we really are thankful because we have expanded the partnerships throughout the community. Phoenix House joined us in 2018, and they are fully funded by the healthcare agency, so they provide support for our schools. Currently, they are providing support for Edison, Gwen, Jefferson, Lincoln, Marshall, Bnderosa, Price, and Sunkis. What they do is they provide the Behavioral Health Intervention Support System, which provides guidance lessons for a grade level, the grade level that is the most impacted and needs support. Then the second tier would be small counseling groups, and the third one will be the parenting lessons. So, that is a 10-week course where they, the purpose of that is to support the families in developing strong relationships between parent and child. So, for last year, they were able to provide support for 526 students. That is low in comparison to previous years. Previous years, they provide the support for over 250 students at any given year throughout the district. We are thankful for their partnership and for the support, and we continue to look forward to extending our collaboration with them. And now I have Jennifer and Zain with us so that they can present on the collaboration that we have with Western Youth Services.
Thank you, Shelby. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Icke, a licensed clinical social worker and program director with Western Youth Services. I've worked for Western Youth Services for just over 11 years, and I'm honored to represent our Jump Start for Kids program in service to AESD. I'll have Zain introduce himself.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Zain Meintz. I'm a licensed marriage family therapist and associate clinical director for our community programs at Western Youth Services. So, I've been with the organization for over 10 years, and the majority of my time, I've actually spent supporting AESD, all the way from providing direct service in the classroom and in the schools to supporting programs with program management. A little bit about Western Youth Services, we're a nonprofit mental health organization that supports youth and families. And since 2006, we've been really fortunate to have a strong collaboration with AESD through providing comprehensive mental health services through our Jump Start for Kids program, all the way from prevention to intensive intervention. Currently, each school campus has a full-time Behavioral Health Aid that is able to provide year-round support to students and families at each of their school sites and really support the BST. All schools also have access to two full-time mental health clinicians as well as four additional clinical student interns that can provide that tier-three intensive therapy support that's so valuable to a lot of our kids and families. All of our services are designed and proven to reduce and mitigate the impact of trauma, otherwise known as adverse childhood experiences or ACEs. And that's really through providing tools and skills to help kids and families build resilience, really through really challenging times. Through this partnership, AESD, we also offer access to all of our other programs and services, like our outreach and engagement program, our behavioral health training collaborative, our Medi-Cal outpatient clinics, as well as support for anybody in a family that needs access to medical, to mental health services through our one-door, any-door program. We're currently and have been longtime residents of Family Oasis Resource Center. We are on the Paul Revere Elementary School campus, and, you know, anybody that wants to benefit from support can come through our doors and get some care that they need. So, Jennifer's going to talk a little bit more about the specifics of the program. So Jennifer's going to talk a little bit more about the specifics of the program.
So at that tier-one level, the Behavioral Health Aid, or BHA, provides full-scope SEL support via targeted classroom workshops, lunch club and recess support interventions, and supportive school-wide initiatives such as Start With Hello and Mental Health Awareness Week. Consultation to teachers and school staff is also provided. We employ a total of 26 BHAs for AESD, 23 of whom are bilingual, highly creative individuals. We have one BHA who just started a tier-one support called Fire Fridays. He blended his passion for tennis shoes, for sneakers, with really supporting any child that is caught making a good decision or positive behavior, gets this little paper that really entitles them to the VIP treatment on Friday of him cleaning their shoes, their tennis shoes, and really engaging with that student in conversation, how they're transitioning back to school, what their future goals are. And the students love it. At the tier-two level, students in need are provided with evidence-based individual, group, or family intervention based upon need as well as case management support. Within the tier-three level, our master's-level clinicians provide therapy to individual students and their families with the goal of promoting healing and to assist parents in best understanding their child's mental health needs. As you can see on the slide, while in person during the 2019-2020 school year, BHAs and clinicians served over 13,500 unduplicated students. We continued to provide much-needed mental health support throughout school closures due to COVID, providing more than 12,500 direct services to students and families in the last school year. The number and acuity of referrals coming in have risen sharply. The trauma and social isolation related to the pandemic is profoundly affecting the functioning of those most vulnerable and at risk. The trends in terms of reasons for referrals involve anxiety, depression, grief and loss, and trauma. The grief response is compounded by students' multiple losses, the passing of loved ones, parents losing their jobs or separating, moving as a result of financial hardship, and so on. Our two bilingual clinicians housed at Family Oasis served 94 AESD students and families with intensive therapy in this last school year alone, services that these students and families perhaps would not get otherwise if it wasn't provided through this program. I'll turn it back over to Zain briefly.
So as Jennifer shared, it's, you know, vital that we prioritize the mental health of our kiddos, especially now. Our data indicate that 80% of the AESD students that we screened have at least one ACE or one adverse childhood experience, with 30% of them having four or more. And we know that this puts them at risk-
What was that last number?
Uh, 30% having four or more.
Four or more, okay.
Yeah, of those students that we screened. And we know that this puts them at risk for toxic stress and poor life outcomes without adequate buffering and support. So we're so glad to be able to have this really robust partnership with Anaheim Elementary School District, where we can offer access to mental health services, where we can identify trauma, we can intervene and provide services that are necessary and stop that trauma in its tracks for this current and for future generations. So thank you again for this partnership, and we appreciate you allowing us to speak this evening.
Okay, as part of these supports in place, one of the early steps is to develop a behavior action plan. And the behavior action plan, it basically outlines what is the problem, you know, why is it a problem and why is it happening? And then what are we going to do about it? And along the lines of the form is also a goal that we set to, to work on this intervention. And at the end, we ask, was it effective? And if it wasn't effective, what are the next steps? But even if it was effective, what are the next steps? And part of this process also includes the possibility of outside referrals. So we may refer to Western Youth Services, Phoenix House, or the, the county's mental health collaborative team. Part of the process might also include a referral for special education, where we will potentially conduct an assessment to determine if a child is eligible for special education services. If we determine that the services that we are, are providing are, are not enough to meet the students' needs, there's also the possibility of an outside agency providing wraparound services like Phoenix House, where the agency will actually go into the home and work with the student or the family.
Much of what we do is very sensitive in nature. Celebrating our victories have to be confined to the behavioral support teams. But I do want to say thank you because many of those wraparound services have come and stabilized very difficult situations in which we have to quickly put together a team where there is a youth advocate, a parent advocate, a social worker, or a case manager, and a therapist. And oftentimes, they need to go into the homes. Sometimes we have driven far to locate our students, to bring them back. We have had meetings, IEP meetings, not in your typical offices. We have meetings wherever we are capable of having those meetings so that we can provide those services. So I want to say thank you because oftentimes you sign off on the services that we provide. And we are never able to celebrate the huge successes that we have and how you have impacted the life of our students. It's difficult to share that. That is confidential information. But please know that you have given us the ability to support students when they need it the most. And for us, that is our passion, that is our calling, and that is all of us that are here in front of you. We do that day in and day out. And so we just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to, to work for you on behalf of our students. I, we love it, we are passionate. And with that being said, we also wanted to talk about what are the next supports that we have for our families as a school district, not just for our students?
Thank you, Shirley. And yes, given the pandemic that just happened, and we knew that a lot of, obviously, the families needed the most support. Number one, we offered the district mental health resource page for families to be able to get to resources right away, whether it's resources that they need from outside sources or simply from the counseling page that we had developed where they can actually get some, also some coping skills for their kids at home, things like this. So like, that was one of them. And then also our SEL parent workshops, which in district training, but onsite, we do like coffee chats. And coffee chats, honestly, that's the way that we get to like interact with the parents. That's the way we make the bonds with them. We started realizing how important they were. And so I, I, we upped it, especially during that time where it was just twice a month and we were giving these coffee chats. And parents, parents liked it. They would give us feedback on it. And so they're very important to the community and to making sure that they're actually getting these services as well. So, and then also our Wellness Wednesdays, which we will continue once a month, but parent support via Google meets, but before, we had it every Wednesday. So our, our main goal was obviously to, to make sure that the parents felt supported. And also through that is grief and loss parent groups that, based upon like the referrals from students, they would also get those services. So that is from our family support. Thank you.
This was a really brief overview of what we do. There is a lot of information that we cannot share, but I, we just wanted to, for you to have an understanding that we are approaching the needs of our student, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally, from a very systematic point of view. And we have partner up and we have formed multidisciplinary teams at every site so that we are not thinking of different solutions or that we are not perhaps not looking at certain aspects so that we can provide the most support for the student, but also for our families. At this point, we are here to answer any questions that you may have or any comments, and any of us are here willing to answer those questions.
I have a lot of comments, actually. You don't need to think, I mean, thank you for the thanks to the board and the cabinet, but from the deepest bottom that I can go to in my soul, I think all of you. I think all of you, I think, and please share with all your staff, all the partnerships. Wow. 80% of our students have at least one adverse childhood experience, with 30% with four or more. I know the research. I, I'm very, I follow Duncan Andrade, Shriam Hana Gita Martinez, a lot of the research on trauma. And even prior to the pandemic. We started in 2015? We started in 2015? Coming from this community, a lot of us know that, you know, Anaheim is an urban community, and our students, I mean, we faced a lot of childhood experiences, you know, tons of them, tons of layers. We know what our families, our friends, we know what, what they go through. And on top of that, to have COVID and during this time, that's, that's why I'm so grateful. And thank you for such an amazing presentation. You know, the key component of learning is, is caring. A hu, you know, I'm happy that, you know, with regards to policy at the state and national level, we are looking now at more at the whole child. And at the end of the day, and this is coming from the student's point of view, they don't care what you know until, until now you know that you care. And I know at Anaheim Elementary School District, we care about all of our kids. That is at the core of education, and we couldn't do it without you. So again, from the deepest bottom part of my soul, thank you. And to Cabinet, let us continue this work. Let us, you know, if we could build on this work, let's do it. I know this is the time, definitely. And if you ever need me as an individual board member to speak out, I will be there. I will drop anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGillis. Very well stated.
Yeah, just great presentation, everyone, and thank you for all that you do for our students here in AESD. You know, I really think it's great that everybody is, and what, what is that quote that you guys said? None of us is as good as all of us. I really like that, and I really appreciate this interdisciplinary approach. I think it's good. It's working smarter, not harder. And, you know, kudos to all of you. So just please keep doing what you're doing and just keep helping our students. Thank you.
I think you've, I'm just grateful that you are part of our family here in AESD. We truly need all of you. And yeah, I don't see why you're thanking us. I get it, but we should be bowing down to you all because you literally save lives. That's what you do. And you should know that, and you should be super proud of yourselves and proud of the work that you invested your life into. Because without you and your teams and your organizations, our families would not make it through sometimes. And I've seen it, literally you save lives. So thank you for doing that. We really do appreciate you. You've impacted my life, my children's lives. So there's no, there's no real thing I could actually say to thank you enough for all the work that you do. Just know that we're here to support you and your teams, and we're here to grow our partnerships and figure out ways that we can improve on what we're doing. But yeah, you're right, Pablo, it's about being, being kind and caring and passionate to our families and our communities and understanding where they're coming from. So then we can then grow our children into their full potential, right? And you're all playing a role in doing that. And just know you are. And you should be super proud of yourselves in everything that you do, and we welcome any future collaborations. So thank you so much for being here this evening. Appreciate it.
Great presentation. As my fellow board members have said, we are, I'm grateful you're here. We're all grateful that you're in place. You're just like a well-oiled machine. You all work so well, all of the different components, and we're just so grateful for that. So I hope that we can continue to pull even more support in your direction because I've, I think we've all been worried throughout the entire pandemic of what the impact is on our families and on our children who, it doesn't always show up right away. It doesn't always show up right away or in the most common way. Sometimes it's, you have to kind of dig for it a little bit and realize what's going on. And so my, my one question, and I honestly don't know if you can answer this, there's so many different parts of what's been going on that is affecting families, that are, it's affecting families. And as a property manager, I see, of course, it's highlighted rental issues and housing issues. Can you tell me, in the family support area, where you see most, what's coming to you predominantly as an issue, just generally? What you see as one of the top, like, and also in the children, either because of that or, or what, what are you seeing? Like, for instance, to be a little more clear, are the children just afraid? Are they specifically relating it to something or worried that about where they're going to live, you know? So it's kind of a broad question, but if you could kind of tell me, in the family support area, what you see is most predominant? And then also with the students, where, where or how are they being affected in what areas? If, if you can. I know that's kind of a broad question, and I'm sorry.
It's a great question, actually, because you want to get to the source. Because if we recognize it, then we can work together to do something to help. And I know that all of us have different levels of experiences with where do we see our students. You were, you alluded to something. All of last year, when we were not able to provide any supports, there were some students that we were particularly concerned about. And we made it an effort to actually make contact with those students every Friday. Because what happens is when we destabilize the system, when there is a lot of fear of the unknown, and it's not just about being sick and possibly dying, it's about where are we going to be tomorrow, or what are we going to be eating? Or for how long will I be able to stay in this room? Because we're not talking about being in an apartment, but being in a room. So the parents then go into survival mode, and they really want to answer those questions, where are we going to be and what are we going to eat? And sometimes it's more, where are we going to be? Because they need to have a secure space for them and for their children. So all that anxiety gets transferred onto the students. And then now we are seeing an increase with our students, just having a lot of fears of what's going to happen, mom is going to lose their job. We have students that perhaps already were dealing with some sort of anxiety, but being at home all this time and hearing all the unknowns at home, being frightful for their lives, is mom going to come back? Is dad going to come back? Or I lost already a parent, or I lost a friend. We, a lot of our families have experienced a lot of loss. And so that is coming into the classroom, and we have seen an increase in the number of referrals for counseling. We have seen an increase in the number of threat assessments that we are conducting per week, and also reaching out to communities to help us out and assess and make sure that the students are doing well. So that's what we have seen, is that projected fear that has come from the home and not just COVID-related, but it is where are we going to be, what are we going to eat? Having all those fears has completely compounded on our students. So we have students that are very emotionally dysregulated because they are trying to make sense of the new normal, that trauma that they experienced and that fear was such a prolonged time, that it's going to take us some time to be able to rebuild trust in you are taken care of, and we will do our best to support you. And I know that Jennifer Insane made comments of the, that increase on students reporting depression, anxiety, and also just being, experiencing the level of trauma of being at home. And we have a lot of families that perhaps have needs that have never been addressed. And with the fear of what's going to happen, it has to spike their needs. And so when we don't have that stability, when we don't have the safety net at home for our students, then we need to provide that when they are coming back. So really, what we are doing right now is rebuilding trust, rebuilding relationships with students, making sure that they see us as somebody that they can trust and they can go for- can go for support. So that's some of the, what we have seen. Our families have been impacted by housing tremendously. We've seen a lot of families becoming more transient because they have suffered from not being able to access some of the resources that may be out in the community.
Thank you. That was a great explanation. And just one more question. If you, when you, you mentioned depression and anxiety. What is the connection or process that you have when you do need medical assistance or a combination? Do you refer out? Can you just describe a little bit? Show me what that looks like when there perhaps is a little bit more of a medical intervention that might be needed, either medication or?
So we are very fortunate to partner up with different agencies. I know today we only mentioned Westing New Services and we mentioned Phoenix House. About, right around 2018, out of the need that our students had, we used to have a district nurse, Roberta Murati, not sure if you guys met her. And her and I decided to go into the community and develop partnerships with insurance agencies. So that when we would see a student presenting certain needs, we wanted to make sure that not only we were here to support as a district and see what level of support they would need, we would link them with outside services from Westing New Services, Pathway, but also we reach out to Chalk Health Alliance. And then they actually have a social worker. And their job, they have somewhat of a multidisciplinary approach to supporting students. And so what they do is they have a nurse, social worker, psychiatrist, and a medical professional. And they take each case of a student that has medical, social, emotional, and behavioral needs. And what they do is they partner up and say, this is what's happening with the student physically, what else can we do? And so we have an understanding that we are collaborating. If I have a student, I ask a parent for release of information so that I can communicate with them, and they do the same thing and they communicate with us. But basically, what we are doing is we address the need, which is why our nurses are such an intricate partner in the behavioral support team. Because we ask the parent if we can then communicate with the doctor so that we can provide that information and the nurse can convey that information so that our students can get that level of support. Many of our families do not know how to navigate and advocate for the students to receive those supports outside of the school. So that's where our school counselors, they communicate with parent, school psychologists communicate with parents. At times, we have had our faces also support us in making sure that the parents are accessing services and that we are then linking the family with the support that they need.
Thank you for all the in-depth information. And I think it's important that everybody that's watching this or listening. Also, here's how this whole thing works and really how many pieces there are to it. It's just huge. And thank you also for mentioning our nurses. We love our nurses and thank goodness they're there. But for everyone that's listening, yeah, this is, this is an amazing, these people are amazing. They're absolutely amazing and so needed and necessary. And we're grateful that you're here. Thank you for such a great presentation.
Thank you. And running the risk of reiterating my board colleagues' comments, I just want to thank you again for just being in the trenches every day, working with our students, our families. Just a couple of comments that I wanted to make are, one, make sure that you're taking care of yourself. Self-care is very important because as caregivers, you tend to, you're constantly giving to those who are in need, which is your passion and your calling. You don't realize how physically and emotionally taxing it can be. So I want to just remind you about that. I think we can all use those reminders every once in a while. Because we need you, we need all of you. We probably need you more now than ever. So we appreciate all the work that you're doing. Now that it's approaching 8:00 PM, I want to make sure we don't keep you much longer because we want to make sure that you get rested, have some relaxation. That's an order. So make sure that you take care of that. And please, also, let us know how we can support you as you support our students and our families. Because, as I said, you're out there in the trenches every day, working, as my colleagues mentioned, literally saving lives. I don't think it's hyperbolic to say that. I don't think it's any exaggeration. So please, let us know how we can better support you as we continue working with you in that partnership and collaboration. So thank you again for all your work.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. As a reminder, these presentations will all be posted on the district website, Board of Education page tomorrow. And that takes us to Item 5 News and Updates. Item 5A, Parent Leadership Group Updates. There is one Parent Leadership Group Update tonight, which will be presented by Jesse Alvarez.
So Sandra Valdez could not be here today, our council president. So I am presenting on her behalf, and I told her she owes me because I didn't know I was going to come and cry. So thank you to the team that's still here. My husband and I and our son did receive services through Grief and Loss Groups. So it's very personal to us, the amount of supports that are in the schools. So thank you for all of your work. Okay, so not an emotional report. So for us at PTA, we're still going strong, even though we're strong virtually. You know, with the kids being back in school, but we are still meeting virtually to lessen the risk of adults in large groups. So we're doing our part. Our last, we had our first association meeting, and we had all of the schools in attendance. We've seen, we've continued last year and this year so far to see a strong attendance on our virtual meetings. So we're really thankful that our parents are still staying engaged, even virtually. A lot of them are very anxious to get back in the school. So that's a lot of their questions of when can we, you know, volunteer? And we've been working collaboratively with Tracy Golden, Dr. Downing, which brings us into our membership. The schools, we worked collaboratively to come up with a plan for, to host membership drives, if not all of our board members are members yet of their local PTAs. I have three that need some support. Stoddard, Mann, and Revere. So if you all would like to join their PTA, they could use some online support by joining their PTA. So the schools will be hosting like two-week in-person drives where they're just outside reaching parents. And then we will be, all the rest of the membership will be through Totem, which is our online system. To date, on our online system throughout the district, we have 644 parents online that joined through Totem. But we recognize that not everyone has access to join online. So that's why we were able to come up with a plan, a safe, safe plan for some in-person memberships. We will be holding two trainings. I will be hosting a financial training next week, and then we'll be having a parliamentarian training. We, the fourth district PTA just hosted a training, and I saw members from our local units at the training. So they're eager to learn and get more involved. So we're, you know, we're going to hopefully see an increase in some of our participation and hopefully through Totem as we move more, you know, to the digital. But we're encouraged by, you know, the parents that are still staying involved, even if they can't be on campus. We are doing Reflections again, so with the support again of the amazing Laura Houston, who I literally could not do it without her. So we have launched already. She's emailed all of the schools with information on how to submit artwork. And so stay tuned once we get to the judging stage. Our work will be due in October, so sometime in November, we'll be announcing our winners. So we're really excited that we're continuing to partner with our VAPA team to increase the Reflections program. This year's theme is "I Can Change the World By..." So it's a really, it's a really great theme to really kind of, just after this year that we had. And the theme is picked years in advance, so it just ended up being a very timely theme. So we're really excited about what the kids create out of that. Let's see. And I think, and then just, we have 23 PTAs, although we do have 24 schools. So we are still in the works with Principal Kim and the faces Emma to hopefully this year successfully get the Online Academy on board. We do need the parents of Online Academy to really help us in that department. So we're still trying to make sure that that, that's a goal of ours this year, to make sure that they get on board. So we will have representation from all 24 schools. But in terms of the PTA support, they are attending our meetings. We always welcome them at our meetings. And we are allowing them to participate in Reflections. So they're not being, they're still part of us, even if they're not official yet. But that is a goal of ours this year, is to get them on board. And I believe that is all for our report. So we have, oh, I forgot to mention, we have some new faces on our board this year, some familiar faces. As I said, Sandra Valdez is the president. Our executive vice president is Blanca Joregui, who comes out of the Olive Street School. Our secretary is Sarah Hoshen, who represents Ross. So that's a new face. Our historian is Maritza Morano from Juarez, who's a new addition to our board. And our auditor is Kira Anderson, another new face from Juarez. I'm returning as treasurer, and Candace Luster returning as parliamentarian. So some you'll recognize and some new ones. Thank you to Jackie for always supporting us and attending our meetings. We're always happy to hear from you and see you, even virtually. The rest of the board is more than welcome to join us if it permits in your schedule. But that's it. Thank you.
Is that all that's going on? That's it?
Don't leave. Don't leave because I have a question too.
Oh, you had a question.
Yeah, well, thank you for all that you do because you've just been a driving force in the PTA for several years now. And it's just building and growing, and it's because of hard workers like you. And I'd just like to ask all the parents that are listening or watching, please support Reflections. Please. Get that information. And it's such an amazing program. And I know Jesse specifically works very hard and Laura. And it's a wonderful program. It was around even when my kids were in school. So it's amazing. And I just wanted to double check on that, if you could give us, is it still the varied categories like art, photography, dance, music? Or what are?
Yes.
What are the categories, if you could let all of the parents know?
Sure. So it's, like you said, it's dance choreography. So it's not how well you can just like do a dance move. You have to actually choreograph the moves. Film production, visual arts, which can be 2D or 3D, photography, music composition, which is actually creating the music, not just if you can play the piano of a known song, you have to actually create the music. And I think that's it. Oh, and literature. Yes, I'm sorry.
Literature, I was going to say, literature.
Yes, and literature. I know. And literature can be poems, essays, short stories, it can be all forms of literature. And then there's K1, like TK1, 2 is one grade level, 3, 4, 5 is the next level. And then our sixth graders are part of the junior high level, like the intermediate, I mean, middle school. And then there's the special category, which the parent and student self-determines if they fall into the special artist category. And it's all levels of just special artist.
So parents, if you're listening, there's something in there for everybody.
And students can enter one entry into each of the different categories. So they could do one photography, one literature, one dance. So if they have multiple passions, they can do an entry in each of the different art categories.
It's really one of my favorite projects of the year, especially with the PTA. And if you've ever been to the, when, I'm not sure how they'll do it this year because of the pandemic, but, you know, it used to be where you could go down to the Department of Education, and everything's on display. And you can go in rooms and you can literally watch the videos of the dance and the music. And I mean, it's literally one of my favorite things to do every year. So I'm sure that all of that will be presented some way, even if it's going to be virtual. So be really ready for that because it's a treat. And again, I can't stress enough, please, I'm asking you to support Reflections and just give your kids a chance to be creative with this because they will love it. My kids were in it too, loved it. So thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Alvarez, for the very comprehensive and thorough report. Pinch hitting for us this evening. Thank you. That takes us to Item 5B, Association Updates. There are no association updates tonight. 5C, District News and Updates. There are no district news and updates tonight. Item 6, Public Speakers. These are speakers on agenda or non-agenda items. There are no public comments tonight. Item 7, Superintendent's Report. 7A is our 2020 to 21 un-audited actuals report, presented by Jesse Chavarria, our Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services. Welcome back.
Once again, good evening, Board President Lopez and members of the board. This evening, I'm assisted here by Matt Sluster, who will help me with moving the presentation forward. As you know, Matt is our Director of Fiscal and Administrative Services, and it's a big part in terms of the reports that we present to you. Before I get going, though, I do want to take this opportunity to thank both our superintendent and our board for the opportunity. I don't know if you're aware, but a year ago, our superintendent, Dr. Downing, recommended me as the Acting Assistant Super administrative Services, and the board took action to approve that appointment. So thank you. It's been, it's been a great year. And I just feel blessed to be working with an amazing, you know, cabinet team and to be leading, you know, an excellent team who is very gifted and make my job, you know, seem very easy. So I want to thank, Matt is part of that team. So this evening, I want to present to you the Un-audited Actuals 2021 Report for your approval. But before I get going, I do want to acknowledge, you know, our fiscal and business departments, you know, and their respective leaders, Priscilla Martinez, our Director of Business Services, and Matt Sluster. This year has been not an ordinary year in terms of closing the books, as they said. As you know, there's a multitude of funds coming in, a multitude of purchases, a multitude of employees that we have added in order to lower those class sizes. So it's been quite a daunting task. And then they get the challenge right after closing the books to get this report, the Un-audited Actuals Report, ready for you. So I want to do acknowledge that. So what are the un-audited actuals? So I mentioned, you know, we close the books, then we create, prepare the financial statements. Those are the un-audited actuals, those financial statements that give you a picture of the financial, you know, status of the district based on that particular year. Also, they also demonstrate to us how much revenue came in, as well as what were the expenditures for the year. And finally, they capture any carryover or any future obligations by the district as One of the things that I do want to bring to your attention, you're going to see in a couple of slides moving forward, you're going to see the estimated versus the un-audited actual revenue, and you're going to see a variance of $21 million. This is not typical, right? One of the major reasons you're going to see that variance is because the California Department of Ed did make some changes to the SACS reporting, meaning, you know, that we needed to recognize ESR revenues as, as we spend them. I believe I explained to the board at the last board meeting where I had a presentation on the 45-day revise, that they had just made that adjustment and that change. In other words, if we got $20 million and we only spend five, we could only recognize $5 million. The other 15 million would be what they called, it's still unearned revenue, as they say. So this does not change the allocation that we were given, and it does not change any expenditure plans that we have in terms of our multi-year projections. They also made changes to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant funding, right? So before, they were giving us that funding as state monies. So we could recognize that, you know, the entire revenue. But they made a change. And so now this, this money that they're giving us through AB86 in terms of the Expanded Opportunities Grant is recognized now, is broken into state and federal funds. So the state portion, we're able to recognize because that is given So the state portion, we're able to recognize because that is given to us, but the federal portion falls back to the ESSER funds as well, because that's where they're taking it from, the, the state on their share of ESSER funds. And so we only can recognize it once again as it, as we spend it, right? So once again, this amount, this grant does not change the allocation that we have and it does not change whatever the expenditure plan is in terms of the multi-year projection. Next slide. So this slide here shows the revenue that we estimated and the actual revenue that came in based on our Un-audited Actuals for 2021. So I'm gonna go through each of those sources. LCFF, we estimated we were going to receive $184 million. We received 185.3 million. Under federal, we estimated we were going to receive 55.8 million. We actually received 36.6, a difference there of $19 million. Under other state, we estimated we would receive 35.8 million. We received 30.8, a difference of $5 million. And under local revenue, we estimated we were going to receive 1.9 million. We actually received 2.2, a difference of 250,000. So overall, we had estimated that we would receive 277.7 million. We actually received 255.1, so a change there of $22.6 million, right? So once again, this goes back to the changes I just mentioned in terms of the SACS report, and you'll see how this affects the ending fund balance in a later slide as well. Next slide. This pie chart just basically shows you where the bulk of our funding comes from, and of course, the, the majority of it comes from our LCFF sources. Next slide. So what were some of the major changes to our revenue? Uh, under LCFF, as you know, like Tim Carty mentioned, property values in terms of taxes have actually been collected well. So there were higher property taxes, revenues collected by the county office. So we received additional money in terms of special education. And then we discovered that there was an apportionment made previously, uh, a year ago, where we had double counted our contribution to charter schools. So we made that, uh, correction, and it was about $450,000. Under federal, I mentioned the change already, that we cannot include what is awarded in the fund balance. We have to account it as unearned revenue. Under other state, I mentioned the funding structure changed to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. And then there was also an increase to state lottery funding. Under unrestricted funds, it went from $150 per ADA to 163. And under restricted, it went from $49 to $65 per ADA. And then under local revenue, we had an increase to the 2Peb program of $37,000 and an increase to the local revenue and interest. Remember, we received quite a bit of money from the federal and state. So of course, some of this money, as we received it, goes to the bank, as they say. And so through that bank process and interest, we were able to collect 250,000 more than we thought we were gonna make in terms of interest. Next slide. So this table now shows you the expenditures for the year 2021. I'll go through each of those. Certificated salaries, 103.5 was estimated. We actually spent 103.6, and a difference there of 121,000. Under classified salaries, we estimated an expenditure of 37.3 million. We actually spent 37.4, a difference of 150,000. Under benefits, we estimated to spend 69.8 million. We actually spent 69.7, a difference of 93,000. Under books and supplies, we estimated 22.5 million. We actually spent 21.7, a difference of 859,000. Under services, we estimated 16.5. We actually spent 16.2, a difference of 333,000. Under capital OLE, we estimated 864,000. We actually spent 781,000, a difference of 83,000. And under other outgoing, we estimated 7 million. We actually spent 6.9, difference of 64,000. So overall, our estimated expenditures were 257.6 million dollars. We actually spent 256.5. The variance or the change there is 1.1 million dollars. I do wanna, um, inform the board that it's typical to be about 1%. That's considered good budgeting, but as you can see, 1.1 million is actually less than half of a percent, right? And I know Matt has informed me that he won't be happy until we get to a zero variance. So we're gonna work that. And that's why Dr. Downing always says, that's why we're the amazing AESD. That's what we're working towards. So it just reaffirms the great job that our team is doing in terms of budgeting. The next slide here, this pie chart kinda shows you where those expenditures go. And of course, most of our expenditures are in our investment in our staff, as it should be, to the tune of about 202 million dollars. So the major changes to the expenditures, two different things there, supplies and materials and services. So, you know, as they say, we always plan for the wars, meaning that we, as we reopened, we wanted to make sure we had enough PPE and related in-person supplies for our staff, right? And so we, you know, we budgeted for such an amount, but we found that what, you know, some of those supplies, not enough of those supplies were needed. And also the pricing of some of those supplies went down. So there, that's where you see the difference there in the previous slide, about 850,000 or so. And then under anticipated legal and testing services, like we said, we always planned for the wars, but we actually came out much better, a difference of about 333,000 less than we anticipated spending there. Next slide. So what does this mean to our general fund balance? So under unrestricted general fund, we had estimated that we would end with a 20.4 million dollar ending fund balance there under unrestricted. The actual ending fund balance is 23.7, a difference of 3.3 million dollars. The biggest impact on the information I provided is under the restricted, as, as you know, federal monies are restricted. So the estimated actuals, we had estimated 37.8. The Un-audited Actuals is actually 13.3, a difference of 24.4 million dollars. So overall, we had estimated to end with the ending fund balance of 58.2 million. We're actually ending with the fund balance of 37.1 million, a difference of 21 million So next steps. Well, tonight, we're asking the board, right, to take for more action to adopt the Un-audited Actuals Report. Upon adoption, if the board takes action to adopt, we will file financial documents with the Orange County Department of Ed. And then we will work collaboratively with our external auditors to complete the audit and then come back to the board in early 2022 to present that report to you. And now we'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. Any questions, comments?
No questions, just quick comments again. Uh, wow, a whole year already, Jesse. Thank you so much for this presentation and all your hard, uh, work this, this last year. We're so incredibly proud that you're part of this team. Thank you.
Yeah, great job, especially under these circumstances and the constant shifting of money from the state and feds and what's going on here, and you get this much money and you gotta spend it here, et cetera. Just kudos to you and your team for being so organized and, and just keeping everything, um, well documented and presentable to all of us. So thank you.
Just thank you for all you do, both of you and all your teams. Thank you.
Again, thank you. I worry about a lot of things, but I sleep well at night knowing you're all there and that your team is, is on this. So, and congratulations on one year. Jesse, we're, we're very lucky to have you.
And thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Sluster, for keeping Mr. Chavaria on task. We appreciate it. Thank you very much to both of you and your team.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 7B. It is recommended the Board of Education accept and approve the Un-audited Actuals Report for the 2020 to 21 fiscal year. Is there a motion?
So moved, Relus.
There's a motion, there's a second?
Second Alvarez.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes 5-0. Item 8, our Consent Calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There's no discussion of these items unless a member of the board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items to be pulled at this time? Dr. McGallas, Trustee Relus, Trustee Alvarez, Board Clerk Philbeck. All right. It is recommended the Board of Education approve or ratify the following consent calendar items. Is there a motion?
So moved, Relus.
A motion, is there a second?
Second Alvarez.
All right, we'll give, uh, Mr. Alvarez the credit for that one. Uh, any discussion? I suppose there wouldn't be. Uh, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes 5-0. Takes us to item 9, our Action Calendar. Item 9A, Superintendent's Office. There are no items. 9B, Educational Services. Item 1, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number 2021 to 22 slash 03 in support of mental health awareness throughout the Anaheim Elementary School District. Is there a motion?
So moved, or I'll take the second from Dr. McGallas.
Is that Dr. McGallas with the motion and, or Clerk Philbeck with the second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes 5-0. Takes us to item 9C, our SELPA. There are no items. Item 9D, item 1, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant number 09082021-01 to the position of Vice Principal, effective date to be determined at a site to be determined. Is there a motion?
So moved, Relus.
Motion by Trustee Relus.
Second Alvarez.
Second by Trustee Alvarez. Seeing no discussion. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes 5-0. And Mrs. Mellon will have a, an introduction for us.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to Christina Garcia. Christina has 16 years of certificated employment, which includes her last seven years with AESD. She has served the AESD community as a DLI classroom teacher, TOSA professional development, and currently as a curriculum specialist, emergent bilingual support. Christina will begin her vice principal position at Olive Street School tomorrow morning. Congratulations, Christina.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. That takes us to item 9E, Administrative Services. Item 1, it is recommended the Board of Education approve Resolution Number 2021 to 22 slash 05, establishing the final gone limit for 2020 to 21 and a preliminary gone limit for 2021 to 22 as required by law.
So moved.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
So moved, Philbeck.
And seconded by Board Clerk Philbeck. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes 5-0. Takes us to item 10, Board Discussion. Item 10A, these are board member activities related to school business. We'll begin with Dr. McGallas.
Thank you, President Lopez. Uh, but at this time, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you for the brief report. That will take us to Trustee Relus.
Awesome. Thank you, President Lopez. Uh, I'd like to begin tonight's, uh, report on my board activities by just giving a shout out once again to, uh, Dr. Downing, who was recognized at our local parish of St. Anthony Clarete at the Mariachi Festival, um, and represented our district well. And we were super proud. It was great to see Jesse, Mary, uh, and a few other people from our district there representing. And, uh, so we're just very, very thankful for you, Dr. Downing, and all that you did. And, um, Dr. Downing, can you just tell them a little bit about what the award was?
Well, it was a, excuse me, it was a humanitarian award presented to AESD specifically for the efforts of everyone in our district through the pandemic and the difficult times and, you know, reopening our schools in April. And it was an honor to receive this award on behalf of AESD and all of our stakeholders. And we wanna thank you, Board Member Ruelis, uh, for recognizing, uh, the efforts that took place and working with Father Bill. Uh, and it was truly a great event. There were hundreds of people there, all socially distant. And it was a great, great community event to have people come back.
Uh, definitely, definitely. And being born and raised in this community, um, it was just exciting to celebrate this, uh, accomplishment of our district, um, amongst so many of our families and, and students there. So it was just awesome and I was just extremely proud. Um, on, uh, September 1st, uh, it was back to school nights. Um, you know, it, it's, it's a very interesting situation with the back to school nights because of the fact that I'm still trying to decide whether or not I love them in person or if I love them virtual. Um, and both of them have their, you know, benefits. Um, I love obviously going to them in person because it's a chance to just see the community and talk with everybody, et cetera. But I understand the benefits of them also being virtual, especially when you have families and you have, uh, people who are working again, which is great. Um, and it just makes it a lot more accessible, um, when it is virtual. Um, I'd like to give a shout out to Edison, who did a morning, um, back to school night as well as an evening, and I appreciate that just because of the fact that they were able to accommodate those that could only go in the morning. Uh, so I attended Edison's back to school night. Uh, and then that evening, I was able to, um, swing by two of them. I went to Sunkist, uh, where I was able to attend their PTA meeting, as well as their opening of their back to school. Um, and then the Anaheim Elementary Online Academy, um, which was great and very well attended. Uh, so I was ecstatic about attending those three on September 1st. And then, of course, a PTA, um, you know, I think it was, uh, Trustee Philbeck that talked about and encouraged all of us to join. Um, and last year, I wanna say, I got, I got about 15 memberships down. Um, so my goal is to join every single schools, uh, this time around, but baby steps. I joined all my district, of course. Uh, I joined the PTA of Sunkist, Juarez, Edison, Lincoln, and Gwen. Uh, my goal is to try and get one of our areas per meeting. So, um, with that said, um, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Relus. Uh, Trustee Alvarez.
Uh, thank you, President Lopez. Okay, so on August 25th, I was able to go to one of the earlier back to school nights. Uh, I joined the conference call at Marshall for a few minutes and, uh, got a bilingual, bilingual presentation there by the principal. I was, um, very excited to start seeing, uh, all the plans that we have in, uh, in place that we planned for in action and being presented to parents. Um, then on the first, I, I did a series of other back to school nights. I first attended the Horace Mann Elementary Back to School Night for my own son. He's in Ms. Maestro Sosa's class. Prior to going to her class, I actually saw that, uh, uh, Mann had a YouTube presentation instead of a live, uh, feed. So they presented on their YouTube channel, which is kinda, uh, another cool thing to see, right? You're using technology in different ways and we got, uh, all the, all the basics of, uh, the new protocols and procedures and dismissal, all the typical things you get from, uh, the presentations, but via YouTube. Um, and then that same evening, I was able to get onto Patrick Henry's, uh, virtual, uh, back to school night. And then this one, I was actually given access to the spreadsheet of all the individual teachers', um, links. So I was able to visit Ms. Campos, Ms. Leon, Ms. Garcia, Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Williams, and Ms. McKenzie for a few minutes each, which was, uh, exciting for me because I got to see, I see a glimpse of different teachers and their personalities presenting to our parents. So I, I was really happy to be able to get that insight. Um, and then I tried to, uh, attend a Loera one, but I, for some reason, I had mistiming. I don't know what happened. So I intended to go to Loera too, as well. And then I couldn't find a link to another one. So I was able to attend the ones that I had access to, but, uh, great to be back in the swing of things. Uh, kind of agree with, uh, what Board Member Relus said, there's some pros and cons to virtual, uh, versus in person. So either way, it's a great experience, is a great way to get to know the staff and teachers and see them in action. So really appreciate having the opportunity either way. And that's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Alvarez. That takes us to Board Clerk Philbeck.
Well, since I had a lot of questions and comments tonight on other things, I'm gonna kinda race through this. I did, uh, attend or zoom in on the AESD Virtual Health Fair. Thank you, Tracy, for putting all that together. It was really informative. It was great. There was even a cooking class, and it was, it was great. It, like I said, we're, we're adjusting to some different ways to do things. And by golly, they, they work, you know? We, we still, it was still very, a really good interaction. Um, recently, I was elected to the Board of Directors for the Orange County School Board Association. And I mention that because I had my first meeting. And, uh, I'm definitely the new kid on the block. And in case any of you are, have always wondered, I know, board members, we've attended the dinners and things, you know, occasionally through, they have dinners every year. But the OCSBA is a professional organization of local school boards and community college boards in Orange County, established to serve each other's needs through consolidated action, exchange of information. exchange of information, and programs focusing on public education. And the mission exists, the association exists, to connect, inform, and support all Orange County public school board members and to foster advocacy for public education. So, it's a great group. I'm honored to be on it, but like I said, I'm the real newbie. I have a lot to learn, and hopefully, I'll have some better reports during the year as we get further into what we're going to be doing. We did have an Orange County delegate meeting for CSBA. And these meetings are important because a lot of the districts and school boards, we share a lot of really good information about who's doing what, how they're doing it. And I've just heard some really good information come across. And we've also been able, Dr. Downing has usually participated, especially when we're speaking with other elected officials regarding public education. We were able to get a lot of important information out there. So, I appreciate that. As was mentioned before, I did attend the PTA meeting, and I'm always happy to attend those. I stopped by Mann for a quick little visit and also attended the, virtually, the back-to-school nights for Price and Mann. They were really good. And again, it was a different, it was a really different experience, but it was a good experience, and I'm really proud of the way all that worked out for the district. And for, I know I challenged everybody to join PTAs, and then I kind of lagged myself. So, I will be much better on that. I will have a much better report next time for that. And as you can see, I'm modeling, President Lopez and I are modeling the Franklin mask, right? That's who we have on. Dream, Believe, and Achieve. So, shout-out to Franklin. And if any of the rest of you want to send a mask our way, you might just get a shout-out, too. You might just wear your mask. So, I will close my comments with that, and thank you so much. Thank you so much for listening.
All right. Thank you, Board Clerk Philbeck. Appreciate that. And yes, shout-outs, as many masks as we get. So, we are looking forward to the shout-outs. I also have a very brief board comments discussion this evening. I appreciate the back-to-school night updates. I just lived vicariously through my colleagues on that because I was unable to attend. I do have a good excuse for one of them because I had my own back-to-school night on one of the dates, last Wednesday, which was outdoors with our parents on campus. It was in-person. It was good to see many of the students and their parents and families were able to attend. Again, socially distanced. We were outdoors. So, that was great. And there is, I think, that conflict between the virtual versus in-person because virtual, you can attend many more of them. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case for me. There's always next year, so I'm looking forward to that. Also, as far as the PTAs are concerned, I did join all of those in my area today. So, I did do that even before Mrs. Alvarez admonished us on that. So, I kind of preempted it. But thanks for the reminder. Also, I am attempting the baby steps approach. So, I appreciate that, Trusty Relis. And that is actually all the updates that I have. So, I think we all have some room for improvement for updates next time. So, thank you, everyone, for all the events that we attended and representation that we've had at all these events that we can attend.
Trusty Lopez, I do know that the date is not yet, but it is tomorrow. So, will you all please join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Board Clerk Ms. Philbeck?
I'd be delighted.
Awesome. Count of three. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you.
Cha, cha, cha.
Happy birthday to you.
Cha, cha, cha.
Happy birthday, Jack.
Jackie, Trusty Philbeck.
Happy birthday to you.
Cha, cha, cha.
Thank you so much. That was great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Trusty Relis, for the reminder. That takes us to item 11, Future Agenda Items. Dr. McCallas?
I do not have any. Thank you, Mr. President.
Trusty Relis, Trusty Alvarez, Board Clerk Philbeck?
None.
All right, great. That takes us to item 12, Adjournment. Our next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, September 22nd. I adjourned this meeting at 8:24 PM. Have a great evening.